Oh.
Focus.
I'm always saying.
On just on that. It's just on the. So I I I reconvene this meeting from May the sixth, it's now maybe eighth. I'm at a block chair of the even planning board, we have a corner. Members present, we anticipate our calling Natasha arriving shortly. Um. At the close. At the adjournment of town meeting, was it adjourned or continuation? Or was your.
We'll see when you adjourn.
Yeah, so it was adjourned a town meeting. In the middle of discussion of Article eighteen and nineteen, which. Relates to the portable housing district. By the way, you made a mistake. I know, we should have more into the two of it.
Yeah, I know.
Yep, we should have.
Uh. But um. Perhaps it's not too late or now to settle itself.
They'll 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 settle.
I'm not, I'm not concerned that there is discussion with significance related to. Different, it's really eighteen. I'm aware of uh three primary issues, two of which are squarely in our family way. The first is a question of parking. I've been working all day with Lee and others and I'm satisfied in what to say without I have remarks prepared for that here Natasha. Hi, you're not on speakerphone, but we started the meeting. Were we, well, we're meeting downstairs, what's the name of this room?
Highland Room, lower level.
We're in the Highland that have, we're in the Highland down here. See in a minute. Okay. Great, thanks. Um, so. That's what parking is one issue. The second issue is a question that's going to come for sure on wetlands. And I've also been working with. Lee and Bob and Reg and. Uh Hank Half and others, uh and I've prepared remarks to both of those and I'm satisfied with those, okay? The other is a question of the deed restrictions. And removing those restrictions, of which there's been a ton of chatter online. And there's been some chatter, hi Natasha, we're just talking about.
Sorry, I was upstairs.
Um, the other uh. Uh and there's been some discussion on it. My.
Can I talk to you next to you, what you. Briefly, what you plan to say about parking on the wetlands?
So with parking, I have my notes, let's see if I've memorized it. Uh, hi.
You said parking in the wetlands?
No.
I just said parking in the wetlands.
What's that?
Open your ears, man.
I heard you.
Open your ears.
So uh, of course we park in the wetlands, where else you got a park?
Exactly.
No place left.
Right, there's no place else. So with respect to the parking, I intend to say that this, that in two thousand and that last year. Uh, two thousand twenty-three Stan Tech um. Uh, did a parking analysis of several multifamily. Uh, uh, housing developments in town. And prior to that, in the year before, the M A P C conducted the study. Uh, of multiple properties throughout the suburban area outside of Boston, including Needham, that was in two thousand twenty-two. And the findings of their discovery show that zero point eight was. Um, was for market rate. For uh multifamily properties uh without real aid restrictions was was uh was a reasonable number. And the housing plan. Uh, or the home, I think of recommending pretty much one, I think, across the board. And here we have a population, um, here we have a population that's seniors and we know that senior.
And disabled.
And disabled, but in particular, uh seniors and disabled and low income, but I was just about to say the seniors in particular. Have a li- a lower demand on parking, but disabled even fewer. But more to the point, we also have a district in town, the Elder Services District, which has a parking standard of zero point five. Uh, but notwithstanding all of that, it's important that the town meeting recognize that what we're setting. Is a standard of zero point five, it is a minimum requirement as part of the process. A developer will bring an application, that application necessarily is required to include. A parking analysis as part of the traffic impact study. And that's something that we will look at, the planning board has the authority. To um. Uh, you know, to impose increased standards if we deem that it's necessary. And we have the power to investigate, I don't think question that, so.
And by a traffic engineer by a um, what is it that we said?
Well, we may not need, I don't want to get into a peer review because I don't know that we're gonna need it. But a traffic engineer does.
It's all part of the.
Yeah, I plan review, it's gonna happen later.
Not like, nothing to do with.
I'm not getting into the detail of.
Right.
That stuff because that's a distraction.
But the housing, I think, also surveyed their site and I think, are you gonna mention that?
So the and.
Now, what's the issue with the wetlands?
The issue with the wetlands is comes from a a friend. Um, and I. And it comes in response to concerns that have been raised. On the uh, on the floor uh by residents of the development, but also quietly. Other concerns were raised just among groups of town meeting members. And um. Uh, that, you know. Is this developed, you know, can this development exist in wetlands? So what I intend to say, and there'll be a question. A foreign, a question that I received. Uh. Uh, asking, you know, how we resolve this issue. And so.
But it's not over wetlands.
But that's our issue. It is, it is to both of you. It is an issue and it is a wetlands.
There are wetlands there.
Well, there are wetlands there, but they've been meeting with the Conservation Commission over the course of the last year and a half, the Conservation Commission has looked at the drawings. Um, and they've modified their plans, so the Conservation Commission, I think, was comfortable with it. And the permit's gonna be subject to a wetlands protection after permit.
And, uh, you know, all of which is governed under the wet uh wetlands protection.
And again, nothing to do with zoning.
I was just about to say that it's, that's a project-related specific question, however. I, you know, this is, you know, this is, this is our answer, in fact, I'm also gonna say that. The existence of wetlands inform this zoning. We knew about this all along, we were, and so.
That's right.
And we were comfortable.
They have a wetlands for the Asian on the plans that they showed us.
That's what I was trying to say, yeah, they have a wet, that's what you should say, they have a wetland delineation. And they're following the zoning.
I have it all.
And they're bound to follow the wetlands regulation.
And they'll have to get a permit from the Conservation Commission.
And any, in any plan that they ever show, that's actually reduced. The improved service.
I was, I, that's also, I know.
That's really important, yeah.
And then actually created infiltration of the ground, which never existed before.
And I'm, I.
Correct.
I'm not gonna, I, I'm not gonna get too into the weeds, but your first point, I am, it's in literally in my note to say that exactly that, that. Um. The existing property uh encroaches on the wetlands. And that we expect any redevelopment would reduce the encroachment. And it's literally the line that I have, so. So the existing property encroaches.
It doesn't grow.
No, 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 just keep it, keep it simple.
I think, I think, I just know, I think some of those buildings, I mean, previous service is already part of it. That came up in our.
The wetlands are in the back.
I know, but there are.
I would just say, I, I, I think already pointed.
Keep it, keep it, keep it, keep it simple. Keep it simple.
Adam, they're tearing down those buildings, they're gonna build something new.
Yes, I understand.
Gonna be less covered than before, so it's a benefit.
And they're gonna do.
On D E P permit and that's, that's its own process.
I understand that, I'm gonna strike that last comment.
You just wanna keep it simple because everything, everything's complicated, so, you know, just the. Unless you say the better off you are.
Correct. Remember, it's like an audit.
We, we don't need.
No, because your information is just to keep it, to keep it simple. To say the zoning maps that they showed us, the wetlands did not encroach, they will be doing that with someone else. But however, when they reduce, when they take down the buildings, they'll be reducing the surface area. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, don't, don't create controversy with this name.
Strike that line, no problem. No problems. Uh, okay, so that's that, uh, thanks.
And I think you guys seem so organized because there's a world prepared always for these things, so.
Um. Thank you, uh, with respect to the deed restrictions. I uh, it's really, it's Article forty-one, it's not really a zoning article.
Right, it's not our problem.
Um, but.
Let the select board talk to it.
I will, but I, so Kathy and I are gonna sit the way we sat last time. Kind of backs to each other. And she and I are kind of quarterbacking this, and there's a lot of different things that are happening on town meeting floor. Different motions that may come up through the process, that may frustrate the process, we just have to deal with them.
I mean, you talked about changing the order, which.
Potentially Glenn's motion and, and maybe others, so Kathy and I are gonna kind of co-quarterback this stuff. Because there will be a place for the planning board to answer a question, there'll be a place where. We want to designate out to the select board to address a question depending on the question that comes. And also Margaret Moore and will be at our table as well. And there may be an opportunity for her to speak knowledgefully about some certain regulation of the shoe public housing, she is the um. One of the heads of the Candor's Health Authority.
Who's consulting with the N H A. Yeah, she's been coming to those meetings.
She's been, yeah, she's been, okay, so she's one of the who.
She's the consultant.
So we, you know, we'll need to make sure that she's permission for the moderator, obviously.
She needs permission from town meeting, yes.
Yes, but, right, yes, and then um.
It's procedure.
And then uh. So. I, I have my own comments on the restrictions. I know a lot of people are so concerned that, that they intend to kill it as a result. I read the, have you all read the memorandum of understanding, have you seen that?
Yeah, I, I copied it out, it's a hard copy.
So there's really one operative clause and, and I, you know, I know that. I know that, um, thank you. I know that, uh, you know, that some are concerned that it's not specific enough, however. I, there is a level, there is a level of flexibility that's needed, the reality as I see it. Is first of all, there are additional regulations that I hope Margaret will speak to. That uh will partly assuage some of the concern, but the other reality. Is there's a long waitlist for um. For this, we know it is hundreds and hundreds of people deep. And the way operationally. The um, the Housing Authority will work through the existing tenants. And then uh, assuming a hundred percent of those returned, there's roughly a hundred units that still are open. Over the course of both London Penn Chambers, it will work through that waitlist based on. Uh, based on the preferential treatment for, as I understand it. Seniors and then also disabled and also a Needham preference, which came up in particular, I, our uh.
May I interrupt here? Those, in my opinion, this is not our.
I'm not, well, I actually think it is, Paul.
No, this is, we are not here. To advocate in favor of the Needham Housing Authority projects. They want to build something, they're asking us to change the zoning, we're accommodating that we're changing the zoning. That's all our job is, we're not doing planning based on, based on the Needham Housing Authority, we have our own housing plan. That's totally separate from this.
It's not, it's actually included, this includes it.
This isn't our hunt.
Uh, so technically, Paul. You're right. It's not. On a narrow view of the role of the planning board in a community, that's true, and certainly technically. The question, subject of forty-one, is the exclusive jurisdiction as the proponents by the select board.
Correct.
However. We are town planners, which. Gives us some latitude in communities planning. And on that basis, on the fact that this is a goal of the planning board. To see.
This project is not a goal of any board, we have never had a vote to say that the planning board. Wants this project to go forward, this is part of our plan.
Let me, let me, let me, let me ask, hold on, let me ask, is, is Mar- is Margaret from, is Margaret here for the purpose of this?
I will recognize you. It, when the con, the part of the conversation's done.
It's part of this conversation, though.
That between Paul and I.
Hmm. Hmm.
You're only gonna get the planning board in trouble.
I'm not.
Oh, you're making the assumption that I'm gonna invoke and hold the board. Oh, I'm making the assumption that you are advocating in favor of this entire project. And all that the planning board is doing is presenting a zoning change, that's our function tonight.
I, I understand that, I'm clear like me. I'm also clear that we're not advocating for a particular project.
I am hearing you advocate for this project, that's what you're saying. You're taking, you're taking, you're taking Reg Foster's place. To advocate the town meeting for everything that's in front of them.
You would allow me the opportunity to conclude my sentence. Finish what you're saying. I'm making a distinction. Not on the project. But on the goals undermining our zoning. Which are squarely and exclusively in our own domain. And the goals of this, the goals of this uh zoning. Is to. Is to enable and expand our supply in the town of deeply affordable subsidized housing. That's what I'm an advocate for. And I don't have a problem with the planning board doing it, and if you do, that's fine, I'll take the heat for it. But we're talking about the goals that underpin this thing, which is the foundation of everything. And on that basis, on the basis that we are community planners and these are the goals of the community. I, I on my own will take the heat, and I may, depending on how that conversation rolls, but otherwise, I acknowledge. It's not the lane of the planning board to deal specifically with those restrictions. And that, that's squarely under the authority of the select board, are you there, Paul?
Yeah, so um. So, I mean, I agree with your spot or your, or your, your motions to do whatever we can to make sure this, that, no, to, this means this doesn't get derailed. So I agree with you on that one. Uh, what I want to, a couple of things, one, what I want to ask was Margaret being here, is she a person that can speak with some legitimacy and authority related to the deed restriction change?
Yes.
Okay, then, okay, then, then if we have the select board talking about it, she's talking about it, we don't need to talk about it.
I don't think we as a whole would.
We don't need to talk about it.
I, I agree, I never said that.
You said, you said you were going to talk about it.
Standing up myself, I said, I did not say that.
That's not how Michael P is recognizing you, because you were the presenter, you as, 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 as the chair of the planning board. Who is the, who, who, the planning board is the. Is the proponent of this zoning article.
Right.
And you're standing up there representing the planning board.
He said that he would make the distinction.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I, I agree.
I do agree with you. On, you know, we did convince you of one thing, at least, at least on the zones.
If we're there for the.
If I may say something quick. At least on the zone.
Yeah.
Where the ones in zone, okay? I'm in agreement with you. To say, as far as the zoning article along is concerned. Forget about the CPC article, forget about the Article forty-one. I agree with you that changing the zoning, the way we want to change it. Which allows for. More apartments, more living space for affordable housing on this site. That is a goal of the plan. And if this article, if Articles eighteen and nineteen were to pass by themselves. Without. Article forty-one passing and without, and with, with or without the CPC article passing. The planning board will be very happy to have that zoning change. So that some other project can come before us and we wouldn't have to come back to town meeting, have a zoning change there.
Correct.
Right, so, well, my thought is that anything related to those other articles, they answer, either the select board or.
Yes.
And that we answer the zoning questions, right?
Yeah.
And that way you did, the, the, right, you say you're saying, we, we would like to zone it because the goal is to create more housing on that site.
Right, that's right. So now, and we can answer the wetlands questions because that's part of the plan.
Yeah, so now I want to ask, other than those issues that we've discussed presently, are there any other issues that anyone else is aware of? From any of your discussions with Rob, Glenn, anyone else?
I didn't, I didn't participate in anything along going on with them.
What, 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 what we just said about the zoning, and I'm sorry if I got a little heated.
You were, Paul, that's why we love you, baby.
Thank you, man. Um. With regard to our goal, if the zoning change, whether or not Article forty-one passes. We do not want to postpone. The vote on this article until after forty-one, because as far as the planning board is concerned.
Right.
They stand alone.
Right.
And we're ready, you know, we've had all this discussion, and we would like to see this article pass.
We may, we may get a question again, I don't know if we will. Um, uh, that I didn't do a great job answering, um. About what happens if this passes and forty-one fails. Jim Healy actually, I think, gave the best and forceful response on that. And coming corrected, which was great, but I, other than that, are there any other issues that? Okay, so then I want to make sure we have time for Artie, so. Artie, you'll, you'll probably come up tonight.
Hmm.
In Article twenty.
Hmm.
And uh, to fill the rest of the void, and there's been further conversation, the resolution on Article. Lance's motions. About the change.
Yep.
The perfect, I, you, maybe?
Yeah, that's.
And that's, but at that future town meeting, we'll come back to clean out a more specific definition.
The one that's out of that and all that.
Yeah, that satisfies Artie and Lance and whoever else, yeah, and uh, we'll have time to do that, so. Um. I think. I think that's it, do you have any questions for us on?
The only question I have is, um, I'm, I'm getting, when I get up there, I'm saying who we are as, who we are individually as a, as a plan board, what we do, what our professions are. Is I'm saying I'm the sole engineer, expert in law, real estate, um, emergency management, show of an architect, so. So I'm saying that because if I'm getting, saying this is something in the solar, I'm just saying who we are as a board, this is what we do, this is.
So for clarity, that's not what we, the board had told me about.
Well.
Like I said, there is.
This, but that's what I'm saying.
Well, we, what the board had talked about, and what we, and I gave you the direction based on the special ones aboard, was that. Because you earn a living selling solar.
Hmm.
And this is, and you're about to sell a solar bylaw change. That to say at the beginning, just so everyone's clear, I'm affirmatively disclosing that I earn a living selling solar.
You know what you could say?
Hmm, that's right.
You know what you could say? That you were chosen to present this article on behalf of the planning board because you happen to be in the solar plant.
And you have enough experience.
That's it, that's what I have to say.
Right, I mean.
That you're not doing it because we feel you need to make.
We all have different skills on the board.
I'm, I, I, I'll tell you, I'm not doing, I'm, I'm not doing anything differently of what's going up there, because we've never done it before. Period. We've never, we've never done it before with real estate, not with a real estate person up there. So I'm gonna get up there and just saying who we are, this is who we are on the board. This is what I do, you do, you do, you do, you do.
But, but there, there, there have been board members before that have either pulled away or uh said there's a conflict, and I'm not saying there's a conflict of interest here. But if you look at the Commonwealth of Massachusetts conflict of interest trading, it's a perceived.
If, if it's a conflict of.
I'm talking, I'm talking, Artie, let him talk, talk, okay? If there is a perceived conflict of interest, and this is where we, we spoke of, you can check the tape, this is what we talked about, is a possible perceived. Now, didn't, and I specifically said, I do not believe there is a conflict of interest, and we all nodded, because that's, I don't think that there is, however, there are people in that room. That have vocalized before. About this whole issue of perceived conflict of interest, so, so, the, the thing that Adam brought up, so that's the thing. We, because it was even whether you were even gonna present this, we don't know, this, I don't know, did you want to or not, obviously you weren't there that day to be able to depend. So that's all it was, and we came to, to the resolution, all of us that said.
Without me there, except for the fact that, except for the fact that if anything, if anything, this solar article actually puts a little more restrictions on solar than what was there before.
So it's a perceived conflict of interest? That's all that it was, that's all that, that is, that's, that's the law, that's, that's, it's the law that we're all supposed to stay training on.
Hmm.
And, and, and if this, although it adds in some way restrictions, I get that. It also, it also is being uh, um, you know, you're a proponent.
Hmm.
Of, you know, the zoning article. And it's pretty much a commercial, and you earn, you and your company do earn a living specifically selling solar. And by the way, here is a solar zoning bylaw in the town, so it's different in the past. Where, where zoning articles have come up, but there was no gain for any of the individuals.
There's no, the, the only articles you have to do with are real estate, there's no gain in changing real estate laws.
For any.
There's no gain in anyone, there's no gain in anyone.
No. Past.
As far as I know, we haven't had anybody who was in the real estate business before Adam.
Well, Liz.
No, Liz is a lawyer.
And Liz is a lawyer in real estate.
No, but she's a lawyer, she's not selling real estate, she doesn't make her living buying, selling real estate, you know.
She makes her living by clients selling, and buys and buys and sells real estate. But the point is, we've got all kinds of lawyers, but they have not been in a conflict, have not had an appearance of a conflict.
So, my thought is, because I'm an architect, so then any project that's related to architecture or would be a benefit to me, right, I mean, that's.
If that's, you know, that's what.
So, and I, you know, so I guess what I would say is, Artie, I would say that, um. That you were on the seat, on the um, climate action plan, you were a part of, you know.
I was part of it, but I didn't take any part of the solar part of that, solar part of discussion.
I did.
It's, it's.
It doesn't help you, Artie.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that was rightfully so, right, because you didn't take, that, that's showing that there was a possible perceived conflict.
No, that's because.
Quite different, quite different, Justin, if you were there, you'd know the difference, and you weren't there.
He was working on the tree, we all selected different pieces and I saw, but not because there was a perceived, I mean, I think. The reason why I think Artie was the right person is because he worked very closely with Adam and with the entire group. On, on guiding us the same way I do with the zoning and the setbacks, right? And, and we felt that he, he was very knowledgeable, um, and, 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 and helping create the zoning with the entire planning board.
Just say what you could say, but we all in this room, everyone agreed now we're saying things maybe differently. But we all agreed at that other meeting that that was of, of a, a, that would rectify at least the perceived conflict. Obviously, people are changing and that's fine, you, you know.
And by the way, when we started sixteen eighty-eight, at the very beginning of sixteen eighty-eight. I wound up, now, I didn't have to make a declaration about it, but I, you know, I spoke to Chris D. And because I live on Pine Street, which is close enough to the project, I did the necessary filing with the town clerk.
Hmm.
To say, there's a possibility of a conflict here, I feel there's no conflict. I'm, I'm filing the paperwork that needs to be filed.
And he was, and you were, and you were refused.
Well, when you later, later, when it was brought up that I had a conflict because. The, because of my being on the Board of Trustees at a place that has.
A daycare.
That has a daycare, that was a separation.
I just, we're trying to repair, so trying to make a reputation that the planning board is actually, you know, is operating with transparency and integrity, something that you ran on, something that other people.
Well, that's why I'm going to say what I'm saying at the beginning. Of who we are and what we do, and I'm essentially gonna say what you guys are saying.
Totally, no, Artie, everything else that we, that we do has absolutely nothing to do with this zoning article.
That's right.
The fact that I'm a lawyer has nothing to do with what's going on with this solar office, and the fact of you are saying that is purely because you feel insulted that we're asking you to do it.
Hmm.
And we think that.
Well, well, insulting the fact that we've never done it before with the real estate and real estate.
Two, we did.
Not untrue.
Where?
True.
Give me one example, Artie.
Adam, Adam is a real, in real estate, he's presented real estate articles.
Which real estate article has Adam presented?
Muzzy, the, the, the micro, the micro brewery thing, take your pick.
It has nothing to do with his, with his real estate business, zero. He doesn't sell that kind of property at all. And you, and you ran an election and, and tried to discredit your own mind.
Enough, and enough is enough, enough is enough, I'm telling, enough is enough, I'm telling you that right now, enough is enough.
You're gonna say what you're gonna say, and I'm gonna tell you, I think you're wrong.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and I respect what you said, Paul.
We.
No, you don't.
We.
That's not true.
Do you have any guidance here? Based, based on the conflict of interest statute?
I, I mean, I, I think Artie, I think Artie should just probably indicate that he um, worked on the Climate Action Committee. Um, he's trained as a solar engineer, so it's just going, what he does, and that we've, and that because of those skills, um, he's, he's presenting this article on behalf of the. The planning board asked him. The planning board asked him. And that, and that discloses, that that discloses his history, discloses what he does, and then it discloses why, why he's doing.
Fine.
It's set up already, guys, let me get this there. I create a motion to continue, second.
Oh, I.
We need to debate, sir.
I gave you all the climate.
Okay, well, and to the.
Any, any. Climate Action Committee.
All in favor, please, if I'm saying I.
I included in your pack, I said.
I included in your pack, I said, the charge.